Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the order meeting number eighteen forty-three, the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we have a quorum, we have three regular members and one alternate present in the uh, town hall, and I am joining remotely, so that it's four regular members. Uh Frank, I would ask you to join in all discussions and any voting that may occur tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. And Jim, if for some reason I were to get disconnected, I'd like you to uh take over the meeting until I can get reconnected.
Sure.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Okay. We have one added agenda item. That is uh, PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero three, which we're going to accept under the receipt of applications, and we will discuss it under other business. There was no legal notice? So this is the public participation portion of our meeting? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda?
There's.
Someone back there? One person.
Go ahead, uh Jim, I'll ask you to recognize them, please.
What?
I'm Shana.
Yeah, state your name for the record, please.
Pardon me?
This is a public participation. Now, for the event.
Sorry, pardon, she has been not on the agenda.
Nor anything not on the agenda?
I'm sorry, can you read?
Nothing on the agenda you want to talk about?
Um, I want to speak about the acoustics in the room.
If you speak about the acoustics in the room if you want to.
Yes, um, well, I have a very difficult time hearing. Um, when the speakers at the podium, they're facing you, not the audience, then very difficult time hearing them. Um, I spoke with a few other people, it's the same thing, it's impossible to get a microphone at the podium and like when the um, gentlemen were talking to the side or their displays, I couldn't hear anything they were saying, maybe the portable microphones of the podium were distracted.
Probably nothing we can do tonight, but we can look forward in the future with it.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, excuse me, Mike, um, I did not get the name of that person.
Oh. For Michelle.
Okay, for Michelle.
Ah, okay, thank you so much.
Is there anyone online that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Not hearing anyone, we will move on to the uh approval of minutes. Uh, the of our last meeting, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone have any alterations, modifications, suggestions?
I thought Ted did a very good job, given how long and complex the meeting was.
I truly agree. So if we have no changes, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of regular meeting eighteen forty-two, held January tenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Meeting minutes are approved. Okay, so under receipt of applications, we have one, which is PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero three. It is a site plan modification for twenty Thompson Road. Uh, the applicant is Como Realty LLC, and we will discuss this under the other business. So uh, can I have a motion to add this to our agenda?
Um, I'll move that we add the site plan modification for Coda to other business.
There is a, there is a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, we will add this to our agenda under other business. Okay. Moving on to performance bonds, actions, permanent extension, road acceptance. We do have a road acceptance to discuss. This is for Jesse Lane. And there is a memo that says that it has met the approval of the uh town engineer. Uh, does anybody have anything else they want to add to this? Oh. Okay, so this is a referral that's going to go on to the Board of Selectmen for their acceptance of the road, so if someone care to make a motion to refer this to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to refer to the Board of Selectmen, Jesse Lane, as presented on plans entitled Improvement Location Plan Record Prepared for Hamlet Homes LLC, Jesse Lane, East Windsor, Connecticut, prepared by FASK and Associates, Inc., Sheets one through four, dated December fourth, twenty nineteen, last revision May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, for acceptance as a town road, binding the road to be in conformance with street design criteria of section six point one of the East Windsor subdivision regulations.
Okay, there's a motion to refer to the Board of Selectmen, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, we will refer this to the Board of Selectmen for acceptance. Okay. Do not have a continued public hearing. We do have a new public here. For PZ twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight, fifteen Crisick Road, a special use permit for a dog daycare, dog grooming service. The applicant is Kimberly Lance. Who is here to speak on behalf of this application?
Hi, yes. I need to come out there. There is I have a small business in home.
In state neighborhood.
Sorry, Kimberly.
Last name?
Lance, I'm Nancy. Um, so I have an in-home business, um, can you speed up? Sorry, I have an in, I have an in-home business, it's very small. Um, I took on the care of my elderly parents and purchased their, the retirement center that they lived in close, and I purchased fifteen Crisick Road. So I worked out of the house for the first year, and then um, they needed more care, so I started to stay home with them. And we have some service dogs, my sister's a dog trainer, and she um gifted us some service dogs, in which I had a couple of litters from that, um, the, the puppies that were from that litter, um, those litters. I started grooming in home, just to be home, and um, so I could care for them, and through that um, kind of came in some of the um, so, dog socialization, so it's week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, just about a year ago, I started doing some dog socialization um, in my backyard, um, pack blocking. I applied for a business license back in two thousand twenty with the state, and um, was granted that, I was unaware that I had to give a town license, because it kind of was evolved into what it is today, so now I'm applying for a special written suit of town, um, upon a, a letter I received from the town. So. Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody have any questions for this applicant? Go ahead, Anne.
Uh, it was not clear to me, the legal notice said that um, it was dog daycare and dog grooming service. And at another point in your application, it said it was a dog daycare and dog boarding.
Right, so it's
So what is it?
So it, it kind of evolved into all of that, just with basically the puppies that I have, and just word of mouth, they don't advertise, it's all at home. I do um, some grooming, uh, three days a week. Um, I have uh, dog socialization, uh, daycare, they drop off the dogs um, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then throughout the summer vacation months, those dogs that I have bred and I've done some training with them to um, get dropped off, when they, they would like to bring them to my house, so I have a few kennels down here, just uh, I use for that, and it's just a very small quiet operation, like I said, I don't look to really grow my business at all. It's just mainly so I can be home and think of my, my elderly parents.
So are the dogs you are grooming, your own dogs, or do you take in dogs?
No, I groom dogs, the, the puppies I had had.
But your own dogs?
Yes, and, and um, but also word of mouth has gone in there, so I've got some specialty cases coming that um, had issues with where they were grooming, and heard about me word of mouth, so I do also do outside um, of my own puppy rooms. Yeah.
When you're boarding dogs, how many dogs so total are there?
I have nine kennels, I just um, altogether, but they're never filled, it's usually anywhere from over the summer, it gets a little bit more, so maybe about eight max, um.
How are, are, I'll say, the dog kennels or play area from the neighbors?
Um, that area is, um, the others, like if you're facing my house, um, the neighbor in back of me is in my backyard, and the entrance to my kennels is on the left-hand side. And the entrance to my business is down on the walkout basement. And so it's on the left side of my house, so I don't have any neighbors on the left side of me, if they're facing my house. And then I have a neighbor in the back, and then I have a neighbor inside, and one kind of diagonal across the street.
The, and you've been doing this?
I, yeah, I applied for a license from the state, um, opened my business, and planning that I was just looking at that time, and then had a couple litters, well, I had a couple litters and was grooming, and just kind of, just kind of flowed, I guess.
Open. What I'm trying to ask is, is are the neighbors complaining without barking?
Well, I had gotten a letter in the mail from the town, and I didn't know I had to have a special licensing, so I came in to ask about that, but they never complained directly to me, well.
I have a question. Your back kettle, I'm there, I just live off the road, sorry. Your back kettle, where you, your fence and kettle? How many feet is that from the front, front of the house behind you?
From the front of the house behind me? And you mean the backyard fence?
Yeah, you go as you go up the driveway to eleven Crisick Road, the one behind you?
Yeah.
It parallels you on the east side of your house.
Okay.
And then you have your, where you run your dogs, your eight or nine dogs in there.
Yeah.
That fence is how far from the front of that house behind you?
So um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, footwise, so.
A hundred feet?
I'm not sure, I'm assuming.
It's very close, I guess my point I'm making, it's very close.
Okay.
I, I, I have not measured it, because I have no occasion to go down with it, but it's very close to the house to you.
Behind me?
Behind you.
Yeah.
And as a matter of fact, it's very close to the driveway going into the garage behind, to the house behind you.
Originally, I purchased eleven Crisick Road, um, to build a house and have the property there, when the house on fifteen Crisick Road came up for sale.
Yeah.
So I decided to purchase that, and then when I saw the land, I got, I kind of got the choose, we bought it, and.
It just, it seems to me that the eleven Crisick Road, the house behind yours, are very, very close to uh, barking dogs would be a real problem. Could, could be a real problem. I haven't heard any barking dogs, but that doesn't mean if you get this, if you get this, you can expand.
No, and I'm not planning to.
Well, it's not a matter of what you plan, it's a matter of what the, your permit requires you.
Okay, so.
Or allows you to.
Sure, so I'm obviously very, I have four dogs of my own, two large, one small. Um, and when I let them out, they're not allowed to bark, they can warn me of something, and then I shut it down. Um, on Tuesdays and Thursdays during socialization, that's how dogs communicate, and it's it's from eight thirty in the morning and home, maybe two, three in the afternoon. Only on Tuesday and Thursday.
And again, I, I, I say, I don't hear the dogs, and I hear calls by. But again, we cannot, you know, obviously you train your dogs very well, and they work very well behaved, but there's no guarantee, once you get this kettle permit, that
Right.
we don't know what's going to happen.
Correct, but again, the reason I purchased the house is because of my elderly parents. I don't plan on living there forever. It's just until, so they don't have to go into a nursing home. My dad just passed away two weeks ago, and my mom is in the hospital, as of today, so I don't know what's going to happen, I'm a little stressed, yes. But this is so low-key, it's ridiculous.
And I, you know, for the commissioners, if you'd like to go on your iPhone, you can pull that up, you can see how close that house is behind, or eleven Crisick Road is very close to that.
I, I drove by and took a look, it's, it's pretty close. Question for staff, did anybody file a complaint formally, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And Danielle sent it in for you then.
Um, so what could probably live eleven Crisick Road that complained?
I, I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I'm just looking over the application and how the implications could be for, if you sell it, or.
I'm in contact with eleven Crisick Road, meaning because I sold the land and I built the house close, and I felt I'm very aware of that.
I'm only concerned about
They were okay with that.
I'm only concerned about the plan, obviously, you're well-aid, I'm concerned, but
Sure.
I have to be concerned about the application.
Totally understand that.
Okay, um, I saw something in the documents that your house is on septic?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so in the grooming process, if you're going to be washing and bathing these dogs, there's going to be required also permitting for that, uh, for, for the discharge into your septic? Are you aware of that?
Actually, um, I spoke with the town, the, the health department, and I groom three dogs a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And um, when I purchased the house and talked to the water, whatever, it's all three dogs, that's not a big deal. And so when I started doing it, because if I would grow my business, that's a different story, but it's three dogs, it's a tub down in my basement area, and when I spoke to the health department, he said that's not an issue, he said what the issue was, is if you're putting in kennels, you're putting in runs, you're putting in things that, you know, require more of that type of usage, and, and I go, I don't, so.
Mute my audio.
Question for staff, could there be a condition that limits the number of the dogs? In the draft motion, um, I have put down eighteen. No more than eighteen.
So do we also need to limit the amount of grooming that can occur also?
We could, I did speak with Wes Lorat from the Health District, um, this afternoon, who confirmed, um, that he, he wasn't concerned with the intensity as you know, the three dogs. He was okay with that.
So should there be a limit on the number of dog baths, or will the Health District handle that?
I don't believe they're expecting to have a permit.
Right, so I spoke with him, and he said, I said, if it, if it is more than that, um, I'll let him know, he said, even if it is a few more, he said it's not a huge deal. He said if you're, if you're going to be a big grooming business and hire people and have, you know, more than one station, and I know, it's, it's so it's just very low-key, and he thinks okay with that.
So I'm very concerned about the dogs barking all day. Because if you're, if you're a neighbor and you hear that all day long, some people don't work for shift, some people work, they sleep there.
I understand that, and they know, I'm very so when we first, when dogs come, they get excited, they communicate by barking. When that's, it stops, so now to be respectful, I keep them inside when other dogs arrive. So the barking is occurring, it's inside my basement, on the left side of my house, away from the neighbor on my right, if you're facing my house, and the neighbor behind.
So as we know, noise travels, um, a particular incident, you're the kennel approved on one forty over here, and as a person out in Enfield, probably about a half mile away, could hear the dogs barking, don't know why, just way the sound travel.
So where do you live? I forget what you said you live.
Twenty-nine piece, right up at the corner.
Okay.
It might not go that way, it might go the other way, you know, the only way to sound travel.
But you see, the, you see, the problem is not you, as, as it exists, it's inconspicuous almost. But it's what, the zoning, what you're applying for, and what you, if you branded that, then what could happen?
Right, is, is there a notice ordinance in East Windsor as far as there are those?
We're, we're in a process of getting ordinances, I think.
Yeah, it's just the dogs that come to me are dogs that, you know, some require some, be, you know, special attention, but like say the owner's having an issue, so they'll bring their dog for pack lock, my, my elder dog is extremely um, talented and helping school them. So she'll I mean, it's really been an amazing experience for me to
I'm sure.
I just it's just a wonderful thing, it's
But you have to understand, my, my concern is not about you, and like he said, it's about the
Right, and then
what you're applying.
Right, and I'm concerned for the dogs and the community too, but you know, and these are people that don't want to go to dog parks, or, you know, a little bit afraid of their dogs, and this comes into a pack lock setting, and I don't allow it to go on, if, if they um, bark, I shut them off, I mean, but they're dogs, and they're they're going to have some communication, but I don't excessively let them bark. If the um, neighbor comes out in the back, I tell them not even to go, I own the fence line, you have to have some training experience to understand this with a dog. I own the fence line, you're not allowed to go, I sit at that fence and obsessively bark at the neighbors. I just, it's not allowed, if that's the case, we go inside. If I have a dog that has an issue with barking, it goes unleashed with me during the pack locks, and we're not out twenty-four seven, and so I don't know how else to say, you know, you have to come and see. I, it's not, I mean, I am very responsible, and I, it's just really sad, but, you know.
I, I have a question for, for how, kind of. Was there a complaint filed, that's why it came before us?
Yes.
And the complaint was, was addressed.
See, um, I guess, let me see if I have that report.
I believe we have one here, actually. Scott, can I ask a question while you're looking? Um, a special use permit runs with the land, so if Kimberly were to sell, this would run with the land with the next owner?
Yes.
Could maintain a kennel there?
Well, I don't plan to sell my business as a business.
No, but if you sold the property?
State property.
The next property owner would have this right?
Yeah.
Okay, does, does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Well, I just don't respond, just trying to add the complaint with me, but
I think I read, I think I read it was eleven, but I'm not sure of that, so don't, that's not right, I think.
Okay.
I think I left that.
It's not, I don't think it's eleven, because I have a verbal agreement with them, and I check in with them. Here we have a foot, it's not, you know.
I, I could be wrong, but it's like that.
I, I have an eleven.
Okay. Um, all right, so this is a public participation, uh, public hearing, so uh, if somebody would like to speak from the audience, please identify yourself and uh, speak.
Mike, can you see them, or no?
I cannot see the audience, Jim, please acknowledge.
Go ahead, sir, Brian McCrory, I live at eleven Crisick, I've lived there about a year and a half now, I did purchase land. To date, I have not had a problem. If I hear any barking, it's, it's immediately swirled by her, she runs a very good operation, I, no complaints whatsoever, uh. If I did have a problem, I would be knocking on her door, okay, that's the way I deal with things, all right? And that's the verbal agreement we have, okay? And she has, on more than one occasion, called me to tell me and apologize for the dog barking, and my response is, I didn't hear her. Okay, so if there is a problem, I know I can speak with her. My major concern like that is I don't know how this will affect if she leaves or whatever, so as far as it goes right now, I have no qualms whatsoever for her doing what she's doing, and making what she has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that would be, um, on the other side, I mean, the one I complained, is that Joe?
No.
Joe? See? Joe?
Uh, Joe Parkin, the seventeen Crisick Road? Just stand right here.
You go up here if you want, we're more comfortable.
So I literally learned of her dog business, so last year, and I was okay with the appearance of only a handful of dogs, which was fine. Uh, she is correct, she does keep them on the west side of the property, eleven east side. Her property borders my west, and northern, northern boundaries. So I see all the activity on those two sides of the property. She put a fence in with concrete, with, with metal, um, a metal, um, wire fence around the entire property. And um, but I looked, I've been living in this street fourteen years, fif- fifteen years this year, so I've been there a long time. And uh, when I bought the property, I was assured that property beneath, beneath behind me was her property, but neither behind that is conservation land, it's my land, it's all beef corn property, that's all fine, I was sure that I wouldn't worry about any of the building construction going on, I kind of, people enjoy that view, which is fine, but that didn't happen, well, this gentleman built a house there, we look, give the, get it done, I'm not sure how that happened, but I didn't, I didn't contest it, I didn't come up here and argue about it, put a house right in the middle of that field. Fine. And then she put the same summer, she put that fence up, that restaurant on the entire property, started the business, and again, like, I saw a handful of dogs, I didn't mind. Um, she keeps, like you said, the dogs on the western side of the property where the walkout basement is, that's fine. But when I noticed during the course of the summer especially, uh, especially like later in the summer, and all lots of dogs, lots of dogs running on the entire, uh, the entire property, you know, behind the property to the east side, which is where I can see owners coming back and forth, Monday morning and evening, picking up their dogs constantly. Um, I think she's minimizing a little bit the scope of her business, and has gone as far as I can tell, and I'm friendly with her, she's a very, very nice lady, she's a wonderful person. It's not about nothing personal. I just want some peace. Because I don't have peace anymore, these dogs bark a lot. They come out, she runs them out, and they're not outside all the time, but they're outside every day, a few times a day, number of times a day, they do bark, they run around, honestly, it looks like a dog park to me. I'm in the dog parks, there's always walking around, there's dogs running around, and I'm just trying to be honest, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize it, I'm not trying to exaggerate, I lived here for fifteen years, so she's a wonderful person. If that's right. I like her a lot, but I, I don't like having dogs everywhere, and I don't like the noise, I, I, I work at home now. I used to be in construction for years, now working home, and I hear dogs barking pretty much, you know, throughout the day. Now, neighbors to my immediate east side, uh, nineteen Crisick, they just moved in one month ago, they put a German Shepherd in the backyard, the German Shepherd's not trained, he barks every time I walk out my door, every damn day. That'd be nuts. And I was very nice, walked him, I said, listen, can you please do something with the dog, I'm being nice about it, be a nice neighbor. Been there fifteen years, and he said he tried, I haven't seen any changes. Today, just today, he put in an enclosure in the back of his house with a metal, uh, wire, concrete encased, uh, fence, he, his dogs, dogs are running inside of that, he's gonna if he sees me, he's gonna go off. Now, this might sound crazy. But my neighbor across the street from me, at eighteen, a month ago, put in a dog enclosure in their front yard, mind you, not the back, in the front, right by the mailbox, right there, three dogs are going out every time I get my mail. Like, listen, I'm surrounded by dogs, it's crazy, and it's, I'm, I'm I mean, if I couldn't laugh, I'd probably cry by, because I'm trying to get some peace. Now, honestly, the German Shepherd is really popular, because when the German Shepherd sees her dogs, and vice versa, they all go off at each other, like they just beat up each other, back and forth, back and forth. It's not all the time, but it's enough where I just lose my mind. And I don't want to, I'm, I'm, I'm a business owner, I don't want to encourage anybody's ability to run a business, I can appreciate that, but that's, that's the problem, I've been here getting paid for my taxes, I just want peace for a moment, and I'm not getting that right now, probably because the German Shepherd and the dog businesses, it's kind of a bit much, I mean, and I know what you're saying, you, you guys are saying eight dogs max, well, it's not the eight dogs, I've probably at least twelve, fourteen, fifteen dogs I've seen before, not a one, not every day, but there's been a lot of dogs, it's like a herd. You know, so I'm like, what am I supposed to do? I called Doning, I said, listen, can I do, it's permitted, it's not permitted, well, there's not much you can do about it, I said, well, I have to do something about it, because I can't live like this, I need to move. I mean, honestly, that's a, that's a good question. I want to live here and stay here, in East Windsor, I love East Windsor. But I want a quiet place to come home to at night, and I'm not getting that right now. Um. So I was told by Doning that this is a residential slash agricultural zoned area, which is not really确定what that means, I'm not in zoning, but I guess that means because these properties are about a land of uh, beef, a, a, a pasture, where they grow beef corn, that's how it's A, uh, pasture where they grow pecorn. That's how it's set up. But, um, I don't understand how you can have this business to decide out of residence, out of residential street. So that's, that's my concern. I think I'd be okay with her having that, if it was just restricted to the western side of the property because. Beyond that, as you know, sir, there's nothing beyond that. It's all just land. Um, and then the, underneath behind her, that is a new building, number eleven, which is there. He's fine with it. That's his, that's his business. But I've been living here fifteen years. He's a new neighbor. She's just moved in a couple of years ago. And I just wanted to maintain peace. I have my first meeting. Um, I know there's a question, I think, about, one thing I could, I'm concerned about, apart from what I've already said is, um, everything in the street has well water. Excepted, as she mentioned, so, um, if there's a lot of animals. How is that affecting the groundwater and, you know, well water? I'm not sure. Somebody wants to, somebody wants to do a study and case similar to well water. If this affects that with the dogs doing their business outside, I don't know. But that's open question. That's going to bring a few people, see what you think about it. Um, but again, I'm not trying to be negative or trying to be mean to her. I'm just trying to have some peace. I want her to be able to do what she wants to do. Fine. As long as I can live my life in peace, um, that's fine. When I thought it was a handful of dogs, I was like, you know what? It's fine. And I actually brought my daughter over there, see if she wanted to work with her because she's such a nice person. And my daughter wanted to work with dogs, but my daughter, I'm not wanting to do it, but that's before I realized the scope of how bad this can be. And I'm not, I'm okay with barking once in a while, but it's not just once in a while. And during the warm months, it's like obviously much. Uh, maybe she can control better the dogs. Maybe if you guys, if you guys end up doing this. I don't know, just keep them on the west side of the property as much as possible because the fence will extend all the way behind her property, northbound. All the way westbound, eastbound to the extreme of my online property on the south side. So it's quite a big chunk of land and they run there full under the whole area. So that's all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add a question?
Yes.
Um, I, I think my question is really for you and the applicant. Would reducing the number of dogs allowed? And, um. Is that something you would be willing to consider?
I think you can say that, but then as time passes, it may not be just a handful of dogs. That's just how things go.
What we have in front of us.
Application says there's a maximum of dogs. I already see, I see everything done with that at the moment already. So like, okay, that's not going to happen. I'm not confident. You, your number on it's going to stay that number, is what I'm saying.
When they come for pack blocks, there can be more because the owners will come with them and will walk around the property. Um, in the summertime, it was a busy summer. Yes, there were some more, but those are borders. Those weren't the socialization ones. So I can keep borders in while the socialization ones are out and, and try to comply that way. And. Not trying to be a difficult neighbor either, but I'm sorry, your, your pieces disturbed. Um, that was not my intent ever.
If, if there were a number, say eight, just to pick a number, and she went over that. And it was, she's the way you're allowed it. Then she'd be in violation. The town would turn, shut her down completely. So if you're concerned, if, if we say eight, for example, I'm picking a number, we say eight, and suddenly she's got fifteen. And you complain, we go there. I don't say we, the town goes there. The zoning enforcement officer goes there. And she's in, she's in deep trouble. She could just be shut down completely. So there is an enforcement if she goes over whatever limit that's imposed upon her.
Yeah, but sometimes only one dog is enough. Dog, one dog is noisy. That's enough. I'm sure you understand that, you know, yeah. So like German shepherd, he goes off constantly. It's just one dog.
So my concern is you're not, you're, you're not happy with any number of dogs.
No, sir. I mean, I.
You don't want any dogs. That's correct.
I don't mind dogs. I don't, I like.
You don't want her to have any dogs.
No, sir. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'll tell you what kind of dogs I like. I like trained dogs who are just. Okay, trained dog that will listen to commands and they're just like, and they're well prepared for it. But she's a responsible person. My neighbors are not. Another neighbor, I'm not. They let the dog out there cold, whatever. He barks all day. That's not the same thing. What I'm asking is, what I'm saying is. I want a dog who is, I don't mind dogs who are maintained and they're controlled and they. At a point where it's not going to start peace with the neighbors. I don't have that right now at all. Trust me, I don't. If you, if anybody want to work, come to my house, stay overnight. You're back in my house, stay overnight and see how you see in the morning, the evening, whatever. You're welcome to come. I got next to bedroom. But I'm just saying, if that's, I want, I want you to understand that I'm not at peace with this and I, I don't like that idea of a kennel next to my house. I'm sorry. I mean, I've been there fifteen years. I've had peace for a while. I want to keep it that way, but I'm not, I don't feel like I'm getting that right now. Maybe. Uh, at a maximum, if she was just restricting their, their so-called run, which is actually not a run, but it's, you know, property. To the western most part of property, that might be, that might be workable. But the current situation, not acceptable, might be. Correct. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I think. I'm a resident of Ellington.
Name your record, please.
Um, and the applicant regularly boards my dog and I am there frequently for the pack blocks and seeing how she runs it. And I just want to clarify, um, two main points that came to mind. Um, and I want to acknowledge the distress of this family and then I imagine being surrounded by dogs and. The annoyance that is, um, one, one main point that I want to clarify is that, um. The difference between the amount of dogs that she has overnight at one point, which I think was in the number of eight acts. Versus the number that she might have during the day on Tuesday and on Thursday for pack blocks. So that. I don't believe she's ever had more than eight overnight to my knowledge. Um, it's when they come to the pack blocks on Tuesdays and Thursdays that they must spend up to whatever sixteen sometimes would make it a point that even. Um, so that was one point of clarification. And then the other one is that, um. When I, whenever I've been there, um, she has always been with the dogs outside. On various structured walks where they walk the perimeter of the fence and she keeps them all under control and they're walking up a path. That's why it's a pack block. They don't have a free call. They're not racing all over and they're not outside without her. They go out. One full time a day to go to the bathroom on these pack blocks. And they're going around the perimeter several times for whatever ten, fifteen, thirty minutes. I'm not even sure how long.
That perimeter of my property, exactly right.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So they're going around several times and then, and then she with all of the dogs are coming back into the basement. And there they are for an extended period of time and they'll go back outside for another body break or whatever. So that's structured several times of the day and there's not, it's not a fence in the area where the dogs does run all the time outside. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I think that is a big difference by people in terms of others, maybe some things that are like.
Can I just.
I apologize, uh, Jim. Could you give me the name and a house number, please?
Catherine Cousins, C O U Z N S, and thirteen, we're two grand in Ellington.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify with the waste. Um, I have public water. Um, when I bought the land behind me and I was going to. Uh, build well, I could have had to have gotten a variance because that was a potato field. Um, years ago and they don't want low water because of the pesticide running there. So, um, I never did. So I do accept that, that I can have city water. And as far as the waste is concerned, I pick up as we go and it's disposed into a. Um, bag and then I actually, I don't even put it in my garbage that goes to the town. I have a special, um, pickup for the poop that they actually come and dispose of it. Um, it's a company called Trash and Go. They come about once a month. And it was basically, it's basically when my barrel is full, they, I call them and then they come and just follow it away. So, okay. I don't think that would be a problem. I don't think it laying out there is, um, I'm very clean and cute.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
I have a question for the staff.
Yep.
What I'm hearing here, and I don't know that I'm correct, is the pack blocks may be the trigger. That is the problem for the neighbor. And since that isn't really. Daycare or boarding because the owner is there with their dog. And it's a bunch of people, walking dogs in her backyard.
But it's not. It's one or two people at a time. It's not a whole bunch of, it's not like this huge group just in focus on like.
But is that something we can limit here or is that? Another use that doesn't. Get within the special.
I think the closest use would be training. You know, dog boarding, training.
I wasn't able to do a presentation, but I can found videos. I take all summer long, all winter long. Um, I can show you, I can show you the inside of the downstairs building. I can show you the entrance area. And I can show you some videos of them outside.
I, I guess what I'm asking for staff is do we need a condition. Related to the number of dogs present for training.
You're applying for eight, you're having sixteen.
But that's eight for border. And there's another activity here, which is training. They're not staying overnight. They're just for, they're for a walk.
And there's times I don't have any borders. I'm not constantly busy. It's summertime is yes, more of a busy time, but this might be harder than anybody, you know, it's. One or two.
But this is a maximum that was the, the condition.
I, I have questions in regard to a special use permit. Has the setbacks from the house been, has that been taken into consideration? If in fact that fences might not legally, according to our regulations, if I'm correct, and I'm probably not, which it's, it's, it might be too close. Has anyone been out there? She presented anything that to you?
Uh, we don't have setbacks on fences unless they're, um, taller than a baby. So you can put it on your property line. Usually we recommend coming in a couple of pieces and get on the other side.
I mean, the question is not whether she's a good trainer and a good person. And I spent a lot of time going over that. I'm convinced she's a wonderful person, but my concern is, is what happens if she gets rid of, if she sells the place.
Right.
Now she's got nine kennels that are inside of her house.
I think it obvious though is.
This just in. Um, a condition that would be the special permit shall be voluntarily terminated upon sale of the property.
Oh, that would be good.
Oh.
And that's absolutely, I don't plan to sell my business. It's only there until my parents pass.
But that still doesn't help the neighbors. It still doesn't help the neighbors, help the neighbors.
But it guarantees.
Personally, as a neighbor, I have no complaints. And I'm a neighbor.
I just, I wish you could just see and the understanding that's all about.
Anyone else? Nobody, Mike.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone online that would like to speak on behalf of this, uh, application? Okay, I don't see any hands raised or anyone speaking up. Okay. Well, one of the things that seems to be brought up a bit on this is location. Of where activities occur in relation to the neighbors and, um. My feeling is that I would need to see a, a drawing, a site plan to, to kind of lay out where exactly what. Activities are occurring in what areas. Um, and then, you know, a condition maybe to limit activities. In certain areas that would might satisfy some of the, uh, objections that we've heard. So, um. My, my personal feeling is that we need more information on this, as well as other conditions that were mentioned that needed to be added to this.
I, I would like to see a site plan also.
I concur also.
Okay. Well then, uh, will somebody present a motion to continue this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to continue application P Z twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. For a special use permit for a dog daycare and boarding at fifteen Price Road. Till our next meeting, which would be February fourteen.
There is a motion on the table for continuums. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This will be continued to our next meeting. Okay. Old business. P Z twenty twenty-two, twenty-six, one fifteen Scannick Road, special use permit for event hosting. The applicant is East Windsor Historic Society. So I just want to remind the audience that the public hearing has been closed and cannot accept any further comments from the public. Or, or from the applicant either. This is just strictly for the mission to discuss and to have any other comments that they want to. Have in the record. Um, if you'd like, I will start. So summarizing a lot of the information that we've received. And all the testimony that we've listened through the last three meetings. There was two theories of thought. That I saw. One was the P O C D and one was the regulations. So I kind of delved into both and. Kind of started with our regulations in chapter one, section one oh one. The last bullet point says that. Our, under our purpose is to guiding the growth of the town of East Windsor in accordance with the plan of conservation and development. So the P O C D is directly mentioned in our regulations that we should be considering. So even, even further. Chapter seven. Which is special use permit, which this is going under, under seven oh one point one. It specifically states special finding, uh, special permits findings. Seven oh one point one is accordance with the plan of conservation and development. That the proposed use is in general accordance with relevant provisions of the plan of conservation and development. So I kind of dwelled on what would be considered relevant provisions. So I read through the entire P O C D. And I found. A common term that was used in three different places in the P O C D. That said quality of life. Set on page two, under our overall, overall vision for East Windsor's future. It states economic development must be retained and expanded to support the community with services, jobs and taxes. While remaining sensitive to the community's environment and quality of life. Page five of the P O C D says, our continued strength as a region will depend upon our ability to maintain. The high quality of life and the opportunities that many of our citizens now enjoy. While working to extend these opportunities to all current and future residents of our region. And then finally on page ninety-five, under the chapter five conclusions. It again states that economic development must be retained and expanded to support the community with service, jobs and taxes. While remaining sensitive to the community's environment and quality of life. P O C D talks a lot about quality of life. I look in our regulations and it's not mentioned at all. But what is mentioned in, in our regulations is health, safety and welfare. Welfare actually was mentioned twenty-two times throughout our regulations. So I then go to section two oh three of our regulations. Which is all of our terms and definitions. There is no definition of what welfare is. According to the dictionary, welfare is the good fortune, health, happiness, prosperity. Of a person, group or organization's well-being. So without any other definition defined in our regs, I, I use this as my guide as to what. The, we're looking to preserve under welfare. So section three of, uh, section. So section three oh, uh, section three oh five point one. This is under the farm regulations. And it states. The purpose of this section is to promote and preserve, uh, pres- promote the preservation of agricultural land and support agriculture as an important and viable business and lifestyle within the town of East Windsor while preserving the public health, safety and welfare. So the farm regs say we want to preserve welfare. Section seven hundred for special use permits. Has in what in seven hundred itself, general conditions. It talks about that all special permits shall take into consideration the public health, safety and general welfare. Seven oh one point seven is titled public health, safety and welfare. That the proposed use will not have a detrimental effect upon the public health, safety and welfare. Convenience and property values. So I went back and read through all the minutes of the previous meetings. And the applicant specifically Jay Ursery mentioned health, safety and welfare twice. And attorney Lingon Felder mentioned health, safety and welfare three times. But pretty much just in that statement. There was testimony given as far as with the uh traffic studies to try to speak to uh public safety. Uh, there was some handouts given to us, uh, talking about property values. But no evidence was presented how this was going to preserve welfare. Um, the rebuttal side. We received a petition with a hundred and seventy-four signatures. We received six emails. And we had twenty-five people speak in public. Talking about how welfare would be affected. So this is where I'm trying to make sure that my decision is based on regulation and not in all personal opinion. But with health, safety and welfare mentioned twenty-two times in our regulations. And specifically in the farm regs and the special use permit regs. I don't know if I've heard enough how we were going to preserve welfare with this application. That's that's my personal opinion and I and I welcome yours. Yes, Anne.
Uh, the struggle for me is, I'll say, harmony with the neighbors. And I think the presentation done by the applicant was really good. They did a lot of work. They satisfied me on most issues. The one that I really still have problem with is the six hundred point two and the hundred feet between commercial and residential uses. And the language of the regulation that says it's at the discretion of the commission that the buffer can be reduced. And um, given that this isn't really a farm, it is a subsidiary or an another use. When you were talking about an event facility. Um, and the neighbors have been very clear that they don't see it as in harmony. I have difficulty voting in favor of reducing the buffer.
You're on mute, Mike.
There you go. I I did click on it twice. It still didn't go. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, they, thank you, Anne. Um, anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with what Anne said. My concern is, is the is the noise, the buffer. Uh, and the general welfare of 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 the residents are. You know, we can't talk about values and I made it, I would have made a great deal about what the values of a property and how you, there's no, there's no algorithm, there's no way to do it. But I asked myself the question, if I live there and fifty feet behind me and I want to sell my house, would it be worth more or less? Me, I think it would be worth less, but that's a a public opinion. I'm not so sure that the law wants to hear that, but that's my public, that's my opinion. In the safety, when you have, uh, even though the 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 uh traffic study said it was okay. I have concerns about alcohol in that road and in the neighbors. And I don't think, uh, my biggest concern is exactly what Anne said, is a hundred feet. So I'm not in favor of this going through.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, my my comment on on the buffer was, there was also some testimony given at the last meeting that hadn't been addressed by the applicant when it was had to deal with the noise of mechanical um, devices, you know, air conditioning, such items like that. Um. The soundproofing that they propose would deal with noises inside the building. But there was nothing that would mitigate the noise outside the building. And typically, when we require berms and fencing and planting screenings. That is a visual buffer. So somebody doesn't have to look at something too close to their property. But it really doesn't do much for the noise. The distance is what helps with the noise. So, uh, I I also concur that the reduction of buffer probably is not a uh, a good use of of this part of the regulation in this application. So, um. How do we proceed? Do you feel confident that we can have a vote this evening or is there anything else that you ask staff to provide you with or is there? I mean, there is, there is a motion in in the staff memo under the examples that would fit if we choose to go that way.
Well, I just like to say that in terms of uh of evidence being submitted as to the value of the properties. It's the applicant did not submit any evidence that the properties would not be negatively affected or would be positively affected.
Okay.
I'm ready to write a vote.
I can vote.
Anne?
Uh, I'd be happy to make a motion if you would like a motion.
Ruthanne, you you agree that uh, there's nothing else that we need to add to this? We can use the draft memo?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I.
Okay.
Have support in your findings.
Okay. Well, then I'll uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to deny special permit P Z twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six for an event hall. As allowed by section three oh five point seven of the East Windsor zoning regulations. Finding the proposed production of the required one hundred foot buffer requirement to the fifty foot buffer with dense plantings and offenses proposed is unlikely to be effective. Given the proximity to neighboring residences to the barn and the intensity of the proposed use.
We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any further discussions?
Uh, I guess I would like to say the Historical Society did a very good and thorough job with their application. And they should be commended for their work. It's I know, I know, I know. With harmony with the neighbors and welfare. As well as a buffer that's not adequate.
Okay. Any more discussions? Okay, hearing none. Call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Motion has been denied. Okay. Moving on, we're going to new business. P Z twenty twenty-three zero one, uh, that application, it states that it has been withdrawn. Okay, I'll take, uh, entertain a motion for a ten minute break. We have a motion for a break. Is there a second? All those in favor? Okay, we will take a ten minute break. Okay, it's seven forty-one. After our ten minute break, we will resume. Next item on our agenda under new business, there was an application, P Z twenty twenty-three zero one that has been withdrawn. So we will then move.
May I, may I ask, is that the one for Coda?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
So under, we we move on to other business. The new application that we received. Uh, P Z twenty twenty-three dash zero three for a site plan modification at twenty Thompson Road, uh, Koma Realty LLC. Uh, who is here to speak on this behalf of this application?
Hello, I am Suzanne Choate. I'm here to um, give you a a brief overview of the application and the reason. So if it's appropriate, I'll just go right ahead.
Please proceed.
Um, I am, a- again, I'm Suzanne Choate, Registered Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut, um, with Design Professionals in South Windsor. And the the what was submitted is a modification. I don't know, um. Hopefully, um, town staff can bring up the exhibit that I submitted by PDF. I'll keep, I can keep talking while you bring it up. Um, I think the exhibit probably shows the the difference in the approved site plan modification and what we're proposing. So the when construction began, they encountered ledge not too far under the surface. So that caused us to um revisit our plan and orientation and actually the detention as well. The building itself, the addition to the building has not changed at all. The what we're changing is the parking configuration. Um, stretching it out a little bit toward um, it giving us some room to raise the grade. So that we're not cutting into um, the ledge as much. And we also configured the detention to be above grade as opposed to being underground, which is quite difficult, as you can imagine with ledge. So those were the modifications we did. Uh, we the landscaping itself, the landscape plan changed only because we had to um, move some trees. So none of the, none of the items changed. So in this plan that is on my screen at the moment, hopefully everyone can see this. The red lines are the approved site plan modification. And the black underneath is what we are proposing, how we're proposing to modify it. So the outdoor storage yard, the gravel storage yard moves to the rear of the property and the parking area moves slightly to the rear of the property as well. And to the southwest, that is an above-grade detention basin that we have subsequently designed. We have added new new seat mixes to the plan because of the detention basin. But as I said, the plantings are exactly the same. They've just been rearranged. The lighting plan changed slightly uh, in only that uh, some some things were moved. Nothing was uh, removed or or changed, just moved in orientation. So tonight we're asking if if you see fit that this application might be approved at staff level. Or it it, I'm I'm not exactly sure the process, if that's an application at all, or if it can be approved um, staff staff level. Um, and we're also prepared um, to submit if you'd rather see it as an application. I I'm happy to answer any questions.
We took it as an application. Um, but given the timeframes to the next meeting and um, the review that we've had with the town engineer, that we would um, request that staff do the administrative review.
And that will happen if our engineer says okay.
Yep, he's, yep, he's been reviewing a revised drainage report. And with the plans, so.
Like a minor change, it's just, it has to go through the town engine.
Right.
We did receive a memo from the town engineer and have responded to him, but he hasn't had a chance to look at our response. There was just one comment about supplying a little bit more information.
They have submitted an advised stormwater plan for his review and he commented on that and they have provided the information.
Yeah, traditionally with items like this, uh, I mean, as long as Lanning signs off on it, we're, we usually don't have objections to changes in in stormwater management.
I would agree. He's the professional and we rely on his judgment.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay. So do we have a a draft of a motion to uh, to make?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to allow the site plan modi- modification application for twenty Thompson Road Koma to be administratively handled by the zoning enforcement official and the town engineer per section nine hundred point three J. Site plan application, finding that the proposed changes to the stormwater drainage and parking are minor in nature.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As well, it's unanimous. We will handle this administratively.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, next order of business, we have correspondents from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies Quarterly Newsletter.
The quarterly newsletter that I'm gonna have to email out because I didn't get into the packet.
Okay. Do we have anything else to discuss under a business meeting?
I'd like to raise something.
Go ahead, Anne.
At a future meeting, because this wasn't on the agenda. I would like us to discuss under three oh five point seven, other related uses in the agricultural regulation. Um, the things allowed under special use permit. Given what we given what we have been through recently. With the discussion on event hosting, I would like to note that there is also retail sales of propane, um, fur farms and slaughterhouses, sawmill utilizing timber, timber from off-site. And um, I, I think wineries and breweries with an adequate setback or an appropriate thing. Um, but in general, I think, given the hundred foot property distance we encountered, I am not comfortable with all the things we have in that section and how we protect the neighbors. And I also think event hosting, I question if a hundred foot buffer for a large scale is appropriate for a small scale event, like a picnic area. I don't have a problem with a hundred foot buffer. But these things are not really defined and I think they merit a revisit.
Okay.
I agree with that.
I do too.
It's definitely something that we could definitely discuss, uh, see how else we can address this either through modifications and setbacks for these particular type uses or modifying the uses in general. So if, uh, if staff can add that to one of our future agendas. Okay. Anything else to discuss under business meeting? We have any reason for executive session?
No.
Okay. All right, if, uh, if then no one has anything else to add, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion and we adjourn.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. We are adjourned at seven fifty-one.